Business Financial Report.
January 30th, we had a balance of $1,249,700 remaining in the budget. We also received an update on the recommended entry. The governor has put forth our recommendation. It supports the support of the Formula 8. And also over what we budgeted, it's there's an increase in high cost special ads, $1,000 for English language learners and a little bit more for now public transportation. Netting out $50,872 as additional $7,300 for now public transportation. So we won't make any adjustments to that once the budget is approved. At that point in the spring, we'll adjust to whatever vehicle is.
Thank you.
Lisa, I thought we were supposed to, I thought February was the month we were going to get the new format for the budget.
So we had a meeting scheduled with the subcommittee for February 1st, but that got canceled. So I don't know, you know, I haven't heard anything about scheduling the meeting. I do have something to show you.
Okay.
Just email it to us. I'll do it with that. You know what you can take a look at. Yeah, check good idea.
Can I have a question for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa. Under old business, the first item on the agenda, projected surplus potential spending ideas, Mr. Raymond.
Yeah, what I did, now since we have a little bit of funding this year, I had Steve and his staff put together a quick little synopsis of some items here. It's in your packet. He's got some technology items. There's a few things in the area of what I call, you know, floor scrubber, a few other items here. And there's just a number of what I call small mag items. I want everybody to take a look at those and think about, you know, possibly approving some of these since we have a little bit of surplus on some of the things that have been, you know, outside lacking in our school. So I mean, this total adds up to about $170,000 purchases. If anybody's actually looked at it and said, yeah, I like some of these, I think we need to do something in these areas.
I think, I looked at the minutes from the January meeting, we made a, I thought we made a decision that we weren't going to visit, spending any of the anticipated surplus fund until April.
But yeah, the only reason I say that is that if you wait till April, you might not have a chance to spend it. You're giving yourself a very small window of time to actually order and actually get this stuff in. So if you don't give anybody any time, then you might not get it and then you'll be back into the surplus issue.
Well, we're only halfway through the year.
We're more than halfway through now.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I think the 63, 622, is that the one, the amount that the council?
Yes.
Has indicated? I am very hopeful that they, they are going to come through with that or something similar or something.
They never said no. I'm just saying, they said no.
Why did they say no?
Who was sitting here?
So outside of that, I would support the spending. If that's something that you want to make a motion about.
Do you want to make a motion?
Second.
All right, I'd make a motion that we do everything on the list except the $63,000. So that would be basically, I'm going to call it 100 grand, 107. Because I think a lot of these things are overdue. There's some things with bio code, they see, you know, clock systems, the bell's not working. So I'll make a motion that we spend 107.
Second motion.
Any discussion? I'd like to say I think the spending is very premature. We still have five months left of the school year.
So are you worried about what we, you're not going to come in with the surplus or you're going to? I'm just asking, I don't know.
Yes, I think it's too soon. I like the decision we made in Jan, in January to wait until April before we consider spending something that we don't know yet for sure. Which is going to be there. We spent $140,000 three weeks ago. I'm not sure if expenditures aren't necessary, but I would vote to hold on.
Madam Chair, how I look at it is that this is something that, that we would probably spend from the committed surplus or surplus coming into this year had we had that opportunity. But at this point, I would respect the council on waiting. But in the meantime, I think that we need to get these things done. So let's just go in position.
And what you can do, state law, if you do have a deficit come April, you can use some of these surplus to fund that deficit.
Well, I'd rather not find ourselves in that situation.
Well, I don't think you're going to find yourself, you've got to get a credit from, from the bus contract and you've got to number out items. I think a favorable.
Wait, the money will still be in April.
Yeah, I know, but you might not have enough time to spend it.
I, I think, I disagree. I think you would have enough time in April to spend it. But I, I, I'm looking at like even one of these items, North Sophia High School cafeteria tables. I thought we purchased cafeteria tables in the past from the food service program for our profits.
We did.
So why would we be spending our own money for that when we in the past have the money that's generated by that food service program is supposed to be used to cover things like that?
But it's not there now.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, well, right now it isn't, but we.
I lost that money because of the increase in the minimum wage.
But I don't, I don't think, I mean, I'm looking at this too and I'm saying some of these things are capital. They have been before the planning board, that's required by the town charter. And I, and I think we, I agree with Mary. We don't know what our appropriation is even going to be for next year. We might have to find ourselves in a position that we might want to purchase some things out of, out of our budget for next year, this year with the funds at the end of the year.
Like that's illegal.
No, it isn't. You did it last year.
All I know is.
Did you buy the textbooks last year?
They were used right away. Yeah, you can't, you can't.
By state law, you have to call them.
You have to use them right away, you have to put them right away.
So I remember at least they don't get any.
You probably wouldn't have to do that, you could certainly use it right away.
You asked about the cafeteria tables, did you not mention that? Because we spent quite a bit on, on the antiquated equipment and that was a big nut. I think it was $37,000.
$30,000.
Yeah.
The food service program is a building that can very quickly money. I think we had $12,000 a month last year. We're seeing less and less every year as the expenditures go up. So there's really not a lot of money left in there ready for.
And like you said, you had just, we had just spent, I think it was over $30,000 when we were putting, badly needed. And it's in, it's running, they can make pasta.
Well, the recommendation last month was that you suggested that we spend 400 and restrain ourselves from spending the rest until we were later in the year. And I'm going with that recommendation that was made before. I think it's foolish to go out and, I mean, there's no pressing need that we have to have this stuff today. And I would rather sit on the money a little longer and focus, you know, let everything fall into place. I'm still concerned about what the bond issues are going to bring us or not bring us. What the, what the recon, you know, closing how it will going to mean or isn't going to happen. What it's going to take to make that happen. I, I'm, I think it's too early to be spending the money too. I really do.
May I ask a clarifying question? Mr. Raymond? You're asking for the current year surplus, not using the fund balance?
Correct.
I'd like some more time. I never imagined that because we decided in January that we were going to postpone any decisions about spending the, more money from the anticipated surplus, I'd like some more time to review this list because I never imagined we were actually going to be voting on moving forward with it tonight.
As we get on this motion, we start round the floor and ask you to vote.
Could you do a roll call, Madam Chair?
Sure. Mr. Bassett? Mr. Clifford?
No.
Mr. Conow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette? No. Mr. Labardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Nado?
No.
Notion fails, Court three.
The next item on the agenda is Mr. Tech.
Thanks.
Only one time I can. Thank you.
You have a proposal for realignment of?
Yes, so you provided your packet a recommendation that came from both myself and Mr. McGee regarding track and field. When we did our interviews, we recognized that at that time, in order to start a program, we were best suited to combine the two programs together due to practice facility time and the fact that in track, both boys and girls events are the same. So there's no rule differential between the two, 800 meters, 800 meters, 400, 400. So we found that our recommendation was in order to do this correctly, we wanted one voice at the head position and then assistants to fall underneath that in order to run the program correctly. And if you saw the recommendation, it is already within the pre-approved amount of money that you guys have recommended. It proved to us for this year and also for next year. So there's zero financial impact to the district in any manner. It won't change anything in regards to that at all.
May I ask a question? Leah?
I don't have my budget binder with me. I do apologize that I tried to ask ahead of time. I know we've talked about coaching and stipends in the past.
Correct.
And it's my understanding, if my memory serves me correct, all of the head coaching positions are the same across the board except for football.
Correct.
So not remembering what the football coach was getting and not asking for that to be disclosed to the public, would this be equal to that or above that?
This is just slightly above by $100. This was two reasons behind that rationale. We were combining responsibility of two programs. This coach would be responsible for traveling to both meets for boys and then meets for the girls because they were sometimes held on separate days. So we're just combining the amount of responsibility by twice the amount in this program. So, but they kept the budgetary amount, their main levels have to be the same.
I, I see that they're the same. I, I think my, my concern is more that it's more than it is for the other sports. I know it's more numbers. I know it's in essence teams. I believe the majority of the time they do travel together. You are having three assistant coaches there, so you're still having the same number of bodies. That's my bigger, that's my concern is that it's not the realignment, it's the dollar amount of the head coach versus the head coaches in the district.
Well, they're going to be not too far off, but I think you've got to understand there's a lot more time. Not just they travel together, but there's also invitation meets later on that require a lot of entry time into your computerized system. There are these high tech through it. So it's a lot of administrative work that has to be done behind the scenes. And so we're doubling the amount of work on one particular person to do that. Assistant coaches don't do the high tech system, that's all done by head coaches and entries for your state meets, your invitation meets, things of that nature. So, and it's meant it's undertaken of starting a brand new program while looking at substantial amounts there. So the differential puts it in the same perspective of what football is as far as that stipend. And the most stipends you saw for all the head coaches in the next year's budget are pulled within that. And those are just individual teams that are just focused on one particular entries or rosters. So the rationale behind this is that, there's a piece behind that amount of money.
Thank you.
Mr. Tech, I just had a question about the realignment. Because of the travel of the meets and everything, just elaborate, and I know I spent a lot of time on it, but just elaborate real quickly. Why not have the two, the girls and the boys separate head coaches? Because what I was thinking, suppose we have the girls going one place, the young ladies go in one place, the young gentlemen go in another place on the same day. Would it make more sense to have the two head coaches?
Well, the issue behind why, why we chose to do this is it became very apparent through our interview process as well too is that because there's so much collaboration that goes on with the training that goes on between the two, we were seeing that you had a lot of different philosophies among the coaches. And so since we're going to be sharing practices, practice facilities and like that, yes, some coaches will believe that certain thing, yet other coaches that believe in others. And we're going to be training the athletes at the same time. So it just felt better in order to be consistent, especially starting something off from round zero and be a part of the process for our district, that was easier to have one voice, one person at the helm controlling all practices and they're going so that we're streamlined in this program as one to get it off the ground. That may be something that venture later on. But I do know to Mrs. Gillette's point that they did combine a good amount of the meets this year for track. They just doubled up. So the boys and girls will be just going back to back at the same location, just making those meets a little bit longer. But they are starting to combine a lot more of our track meets and the two coed meets at the same time. Just the boys running against the boys and the girls.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions from the district? Would someone need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, if you, that we accept the proposed realignment as submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of those, so many? Mr. Tech, you're still on the spot for the update on the boys involved cross program?
All right. Not that I'm going to wait and debate it further in any manner, but. So you provided packet that gave you the information as of February 3rd. I purposely dated that memo to you as of February 3rd as we were continuing signups to go on. So it was still an open fluid process as we stood and put that we were gathering numbers, we've got encouragement in it. Obviously, as you know, with two new sports coming out in the spring, there's a lot of motion trying to get out to students, get them informed as to what was going on. So just so the committee understands right now where your current numbers stand, they've increased both boys and the girl side currently under boys lacrosse. We have 18 students that are signed up with 11 committed, 100% to it and two maybes. The other students have not responded one way or another to my request whether they commit 100% or not. And on the girl side, you have 22, they're signed up with 14 committed, 100% if the program is where to go. So those are your updated numbers as of tonight, live as we're standing right now. So that kind of gives you standards of where we go. We've got potential coaches appointments that are going to go on. If the committee still chooses to continue going forward into these programs, those are ready to go as well. So really comes back to the committee as far as how we'd like to proceed going forward.
What are your concerns, that you won't have enough students?
Well, I think, I think it's really difficult to know whether you have enough or not because it's a brand new program. So I mean, at this point, are the numbers exactly where we want them to be? No. Do we have time for that to grow still? Yes, because we're still about a month out from when the season would begin. But as I mentioned many times, the school meeting, signups and ask who will show up at day one are totally two different lists. I can only give you the numbers as they are. Hopefully we have enough enthusiasm drums up and maybe that, that ever doubles up. I would never be able to tell you 100% for certain a month away from the season beginning, what those numbers are going to do. Because signups are not a contract. They are just somebody intended to say they're going to do something. I can't predict that staying.
So what's that downside? So if we move forward and then we don't have the numbers, what does the Rhode Island Interelastic League do to us? They find us, they borrow us?
So, so what are the potential quote unquote, if you want to call it ramifications, if you were not to run the program? We got to March 14th, we went out there, we didn't have enough to field a team. You could potentially look at a two-year ban. So if we had to pull out, if we had to raise them and say the following year, we know we had 100 kids that wanted to do something. There's not a guarantee the league would let us do that. The league has the right and their provisions under their bylaws to suspend a program for two years due to the fact that obviously at this point schedules are formalized and we're just about to take the field. So from an administrative end on their part, they'll see it's a lot of readjustment of divisions and schedules and games such that nature. So it's not to say we wouldn't be banned for two years, I make sure I emphasize that strongly. It's in their prerogative and in their bylaws to be able to do that.
Is it March 14th that you have to have a committed decision that you're going to have lacrosse?
Well, March 14th is considered day one of the spring season. So that's considered practice and go tryouts for spring season. So games roll around about two weeks after that. But you have to have that amount of practices before you can actually play a game on the field. So that would be your official by rounds of Scholastic League start date of your spring season sports.
And how many, Chuck, how many young people are you looking to field a team for the boys lacrosse?
Well, again, as indicated in the memo, you need obviously 10 people to be on the field for boys lacrosse, nine official versus one goalie on the girl side, it's 11. You have 10 field players plus one goalie. That's your bare minimum. There is no minimum required by an inter-scholastic league in any manner as to what your roster size has to be. Your roster size absolutely has to hit the minimum number of players on the field. And then it's just basically a preference of the committee or school department to determine what size you would deem to be bare minimum. And at that point, when you start.
Do you have a size that you deem to be bare minimum besides just what players are on the field?
You know, if you're asking me, are you asking me for a recommendation for what I would say would be numbers or?
Well, 10 players on the field with no substitutes causes them to never have an injury to be playing the whole.
That would be on your list. Correct. I would say again, being that it's a startup program, I think you need, you know, some leeway as far as maybe the numbers won't be as high as we preferably would like them to be because it's brand new and we need to build that interest out there. So I mean, I'm talking to some of the coaches that are out there, who have coached lacrosse and like that. The number that most of them came up with was around 20. I think we could go as low as 17 and be okay. I think I would, I would have to, you know, I don't think I'd be willing myself to put my name on anything less than 17 for student safety, but I feel that, you know, at 17, that might be enough to get by year one. But again, I, I don't want to assume that many kids are going to show up or not going to show up. I think a lot of it would be, you know, can we get through year one? And I think that that's a question that I could possibly answer that ahead of time.
Mr. Gillette?
Madam Chair, for what it's worth, I think it's narrowed down to two choices. And I'll put my neck out there a little bit. It's either, you know, you, you pull the plug or you go forward. You all made a, a commitment to fund the program. We're not going back and looking at the whole scenario about how it happened. You made a commitment and I think given the fact you made a commitment, see it through, see what happens. You know, because I, you made a commitment. I'm not, I'm not, thanks. But the reality is, I mean, truth be told, we all made a commitment, so let's see how it goes. It's in there, it's in the students' hands. And so that's my, because your only other way is to say, you know, don't, don't, you don't have the numbers, so you're not going to hire the coaches. I think you bite the bullet, give it a shot.
Thank you.
My two cents.
Thank you.
No, Ben?
Leah?
Anybody want to make a motion?
I just, I just have a question, whether this is for Mr. McGee, Mr. Tech, Mr. Boss. I've received some calls and I'm just curious, what is the feel for the amount of students that you think will? And I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not pigeonholing you on this. And I know that we have some numbers here before. So my concern is the feedback that I'm getting is some students are being deterred and being told that lacrosse is not going to run. So go for one of the other sports. So my feeling is if they know it's going to run, that maybe there will be more numbers. And I just don't know if you have a feel, you're in the building, you know better than I. I can only go by, you know, what I'm getting and I'm getting it second and third hand. So I'm hearing anything, is there any buzz?
It's the rumor mill, huh?
Yeah, that's what it is, it's the rumor mill. I, I haven't heard that anything is not going to really, but I, I know that different, different organizations are advocating for more players. I, I would say just, just. You build it, they will come.
Yeah, Mr. Tech, do you need, do you need anything from us tonight or is this just asking? This is more of a.
Well, I, I think, you know, I think that one, one of the situations, and, and I'm going to address that. I mean, you know, I, one of the things that I'm getting a little frustrated with is this rumor mill that's out there in the secondhand, thirdhand reports. Madam, I'm going to address that right now because I have Matt Hill sitting back there right now. Matt, I didn't put you on the spot right there, but if you don't mind standing up and addressing what we've been trying to do in the high school, that would be helpful, especially for the committee to hear what we're doing out there.
Sure. So I've been second captain for girls lacrosse. I've been told this at September when you guys pass it. Ever since then, I, myself as well as the other captain, he needs to be clear. With Mr. Tech, we've been advocating for lacrosse. The boys have also been advocating for lacrosse. We've been holding captains practices. We've also been holding informational meetings and we originally had, I believe, 28 girls that originally came in and it has been slowly dwindling down, which has been really kind of upsetting. But right now, there has been a really good comeback in the 14 girls who are definitely 100% committed. Some of the girls have been lost to lacrosse, I mean, to track, sorry, which has been kind of sad because I've been playing this sport for six years. I know how many girls are needed and it makes me upset because I can't play for my senior year if we don't have enough girls.
Would you just verify that too? Do you believe that there's any negativity going on in the building as far as what we've been trying to do?
Not really. I definitely think that there are kids who are advocating for track as well as advocating for softball as well as advocating for baseball. But I, I do think there's some, some things along the lines of some kids don't want to try a new sport. Some kids want to keep going with the softball and baseball and all of those things. So I think it's kind of, it's because it's a new thing, a lot of kids are kind of hesitant to try it. And because we've been trying to hold the captains practices, we have a Twitter page. We've been trying to kind of get it out in the open to try and get people to come to captains practices.
Thank you, we appreciate it very much. And the only reason I wanted to bring that up is I, I want this whole process to be pure. I think that this is all about the kids. It has to be about the kids. And I'm not going to get embellished with any type of rumor mill that's out there or generated. I know what we do in the school building. I know what we're doing to promote the sports. I think that that's what happens is that we're a very small school. We're trying to get a lot of things off the ground. Spring's coming up and people are making those decisions. And they're kids and they're going to, they're going to kind of flow each way for a couple of days, where their friend's going, where their friend's not going type of thing. But ultimately, I agree with Mrs. Lindberg that, you know, my, my support would be behind, let's, let's, let's see where it goes. And if it doesn't have enough, then we did everything we could and the children just didn't choose to have it at that point. It was their decision more than ours.
Well, thank you for the update. I don't think we have anything we need to vote on. We voted to go forward with the program and we certainly wish you all lacrosse players every success.
I would take your attitude.
Thanks, Neil.
Madam Chair, so you want to go back and call on your coaches?
Right. John just made a motion to accept all of it. We'll wait a minute until everybody leaves.
So you voted back to the rest of the committee. I think the motion is.
Great. John, could you say your motion again?
Yeah, I, I made the motion to accept the two people that were recommended, yeah, the coaching for the girls and the boys lacrosse.
It was all John.
Oh, you want to do the other, you want to do the other?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll do all coaches.
Fascinating.
Fascinating.
Is there a second?
Just a point of clarification, if it's contingent upon student athlete participation numbers and the program will actually run. Correct?
That's, that's contrary to what you just decided.
What's going to happen is if you said to the coach.
I think we have to open the coaches.
Yeah, we do.
Well, what was this note on here, Mr. Boss? Correct. What was this?
So you voted to go forward the program, you don't know the numbers, you're going to approve the coaches. So I guess basically you're saying that if the numbers aren't there, you don't have a season, right?
Right.
Okay. So they get pro rated. Let's say they have a couple of practices, you're ready. So the other stipulation is I haven't interviewed some of these finalists, so I'd like a contingent upon my, my final interview.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Contingent on the superintendent's recommendation. And the student athlete participation.
Is there any further discussion?
And it's, it's also contingent on the student athlete participation in the program. Yeah, he just said it was okay.
Yeah, so this, yeah, because. All of it first, but so basically, God forbid if they start practicing this only nine kit, when they stick with it for a couple of weeks and the numbers don't grow, we have to notify, it's Scholastic, so yes, the coaching would be programmed.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Tech, did you have anything you need to discuss about the football team?
Just basically, you have the memo that's provided to you, that was an update that got back to us from Mount St. Charles. They have full pool on their side. There are 17 players that they're sending, they sent to us, signed a player's contract over there that Mount sent home with the students to their parents, so it was signed off by the students and the parents that they do plan to participate in a. off by the students and the parents, that they do plan to participate in a co-op if we would give agreement, so at this point, all I need from the Gustav Field School Committee is that you approve we proceed and forward with the co-op agreement now and we're going to track that with the league.
So recommend the committee vote to move forward the co-op football program agreement with Mount St. Charles.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Tech.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam.
The next item on the agenda is the fund balance, discussion vote or other action?
When did I go back to superintendent's report? Did you want to do, did you want to do that? When do you want to do superintendent's report? We skipped over it, we haven't.
No, I deferred it because I wanted to give, as soon as I could sign as possible.
Okay. So you don't need to go back to it, you're going to, if I pass it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is fund balance items, discussion vote or other action, potentially be given by their capital plan. I don't know who voted for it.
So, four on two fund balance items, right?
And plan for possible expenditures for the school department's fund balance?
There's someone. Right, two, you're on two.
Two, any?
Two A.
Any discussion? Can we move to, okay, can we move to another grade?
So, just, before you go to, Madam Chair, it was stated at the joint meeting that the school committee hadn't reviewed or discussed the plan, I was a little confused with that comment, so where do you stand on this? It's still just a possibility to plan, right? We'll just leave it as is?
I guess I have a question. Are we going to be meeting, at the last meeting, when Jason gave that document out, was there hallucinating this or are we supposed to be meeting with Jason to have him explain that to us?
I think I have some information on that. I asked Jason to come to the meeting for the teachers' union negotiations, to give his presentation on the BIP plan. He emailed me today, mentioned, well, and that's what, he's part of the chairman, of course. And he emailed me today and he said, well, rather than doing that, why don't I make a presentation to the full committee for that and his proposal? So I agree with you that maybe we can have him come in either at a special meeting or the next meeting.
Well, I think at the town council meeting, it was proposed we have a joint meeting with the budget committee, the town council and the school committee, and Jason was going to review his proposal because it was the first time we, any of us had seen it.
Right, but I'd rather take a look at it ourselves first and then see what our plan is, whether we agree with it or don't agree with it, and then go forward.
For the joint meeting?
Yeah.
So it would be two special meetings?
If Jason's coming in, if he's willing to come in twice, great, I have no problem looking at it twice.
Well, his plan had a fallacy to begin with, so.
Respectfully to Madam Chair, it would be nice, I would like to see Jason meet with Lisa, Lisa and myself, because we weren't aware of that plan before it was distributed that night and we both have a lot of questions.
Well, would you be okay with a meeting that was just school committee and you all?
We would be, but I guess I'm aware of the nature that sometimes, well, I guess sometimes we can get more done with that type of meeting and understanding it than spending a whole lot of time at a public meeting asking redundant questions, so I think it was both a matter of professional courtesy and a matter of understanding his plan, which we don't.
I just meant, are you okay with the school committee meeting and Jason, or did you want him to meet with just you and Lisa?
So for us, I think, I know for us, we'd rather try and understand it before he presents publicly, we just have a lot of questions.
So let them meet and then we'll strike for them on the next meeting? That would be my recommendation. So he can meet privately with them?
Yeah, you don't need permission from the school committee to meet with them.
But I also think, I just want to make sure we're in sync, like, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. If you're okay with that, we're going to reach out and say, I think you need to meet with us, otherwise.
Jim, do you think him coming in the March meeting and then we'll have a special meeting after that with the council?
Well, I would suggest a special meeting because if you do the March meeting, that's going to take up the entire meeting.
Okay, you know, okay, I'll be very sure you know. Any other discussion on that item?
Just on two B. I know that I'm going to be the dead horse right here, but.
Jim, I'm not saying two B.
It's not the short, it's not the short one.
The legal agenda.
The legal one?
No, it's not the other one. It's not the unstable one.
It's not stable.
All right, is there a two B or is there not two B?
That's there.
Do you want to try to locate it on the other one?
There were.
Old business two.
All right, so it's two A on the old business one. All right, so my view here is that we're waiting for the town council to, I guess, get a third opinion and it's going to hold us up for quite a while. In the meantime, why I supported old business one A, where we're going to use the current surplus, was because we could move on that. And I would ask that someone in the majority reconsider that moving so that we don't, we're not held up by obtaining a third position. I mean, a third.
Well, in the spirit of cooperation, the budget committee has the right to challenge the opinion. I'm okay with waiting, the money isn't going anywhere, so I'm okay with it being postponed until we have the joint meeting, that's personally.
No, I'm talking about the current, I'm asking for the current, but if you are willing to wait, I guess we'll deal with it next month.
That's why I asked the question, if you were asking for the current budget or the fund balance, I'd be more apt to take it from the fund balance because it's taking us so long. To come to a resolution.
Well, you make the motion, I'll second it.
Well, I don't think that's.
But I don't think that that's what we're trying to mean.
I don't think that's what we're trying to accomplish in this agenda item, so if you want to put it on for March.
What I still don't understand, and maybe I'm just being a little, I read the law and the law says it has to still be spent in the school department, so what are we trying to get, trying to tell, they're going to tell us how to spend the money? Seems kind of counterproductive, but that's okay.
I don't think having a joint meeting and listening to their concerns and thought and opinion obligates us to.
I did come to the meeting and all I saw was a dictatorship. I didn't see a, I've got an idea of how I think we should spend the money, I don't care what you think. That's what I got from that meeting.
Which week?
From the town council.
Last week or?
Yeah, last week. They didn't care. They have an idea of how they want to spend the money, they've got some people, Buffalo here have how they should spend the money, they don't care about the kids, and at the end of the day, I don't think they have an idea of how to spend that money, they haven't studied it, so I don't know what that meeting is going to accomplish, but that's okay.
So for me, there's a lot more at stake than just how we want to spend fund balance or how we want to spend the surplus. One of the things that I think we need to address as a school committee, and frankly, as a town, is how we're going to address our capital projects. We have a new proposal from RIDE on the table that gives you 34% tax. If we can foster a better spirit with, and I don't define your actions by theirs, if we can foster a better spirit of cooperation with the town council and they are going to then fund some of this and, you know, get behind us on a capital project and going forward, I think that's a win for the town. And what I'm talking about specifically is a joint funded revolving fund that would eligible for that 34% monthly.
Yeah, I've just seen the actions in the past where we've gotten no capital money, zero.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I don't define my actions by their actions, so I'm not going to respond in kind and just throw out a baby in the bathwater. I'm going to figure out a way to try and move forward. It doesn't affect us in any way, shape or form, we're willing to listen to it. It's one thing. That's just my.
Yeah, just to, no, the waste of my time, but that's okay.
Well, there's a lot of things to waste on time.
And Mr. Bassett, I agree with you, but none of those items are on what we voted on, I mean, so, and that's what my position is. I respect, as I mentioned earlier, I do respect the system, I'll wait for the council. I'm not saying don't go get a third opinion, but I don't know if I want to be tied up until they do so.
Oh, no, I don't, frankly, first of all, I don't think they're going to give it.
I agree, they will.
But I don't see us, I don't see us as a committee waiting for that opinion.
Okay.
I see us trying to foster some kind of cooperation in getting a solid plan. Now, that's a plan that we decide on and we approve. Can we do that with their input? Absolutely. And, you know, I just think that's a better way to move forward.
Lisa, can't you still submit the capital and get the reimbursement from RIDE without?
No, you cannot.
What do you mean?
Because the new, so the new program, the new reimbursement program, what is it called? Steve?
Capital Reserve Fund.
Thank you. The Capital Reserve Fund has to, the way that RIDE has set up the requirements on it, they've set up the requirements such as the town council has to set up the actual authorization for direct reimbursement back to the schools. So the way it normally runs is you run a capital project, you submit for reimbursement, then reimbursement goes back to the town. This bypasses the town and that reimbursement now comes directly back into this revolving fund. Not only does it come back directly into the revolving fund, it comes back to the one for reimbursement. So you don't have to wait until a project's done to start calling cash in and extend your spend. So that's the real winner, but you can't do it without the town council. RIDE requires their authorization to do the direct reimbursement.
If it's going to, so ordinarily, if the town council, you're spot on. Town council set it up and they infuse it with their own, out of, what do they have, 10 million fund balance, whatever, they put a million in, and you're right, that the project should get done and the 35-plus reimbursement goes back to them. If you're looking to use some of your own fund balance, not the surplus, not this year's surplus, because nothing in that recommendation for this year's surplus is capital in nature. So if you establish it and you use part, or, you know, part of your.
Let's say we just have the fund balance.
Right, you would want that approval so that if you're expending your school department funds, you want that reimbursement coming back to replenish it or it's a collaboration.
But frankly, you're running that Capital Reserve Fund?
Yeah.
You're the one expending on the project, so the reimbursement in my mind should be coming directly back into that account. So whether we fund it out of the fund balance or whether we get some kind of joint funding with the town council, however that's funded, we still, RIDE still requires their approval.
Yes.
So that's, you know, I mean, frankly, that's one more reason to sit and try to work through this.
So when RIDE gives you the reimbursement, that has to go back to the school balance, correct?
It goes back to that Capital Reserve Fund.
Their fund.
Yes, not the balance.
Yeah.
It's a revolving account and that 34% comes back in monthly for anything that's expensive.
It's an excellent mechanism.
Yeah. And basically, it gives you, it gives you the liquidity you need.
It does.
To respond and get some of those projects done. And it extends your spend. If you have a million dollars in an account, you now have, well, you don't have that .34 billion, you've got, you know, as it comes back in, it extends that million spend until you hit that.
So you hit.
So you're really able to get a lot more done early on than you would have otherwise.
The issue is whether, obviously, the ideal way with collaboration versus capitulation would be to have a joint account and agree, but you always, you can't go your own way because of what you said, because even if you went your own way, reimbursement goes to the town, so it's interesting.
Any further discussion on that item?
I would just like to hear what we, if we have some type of plan as a committee going forward, how long are we going to wait before it gets to the point where a decision just needs to be made? Because we've now gone through two special joint meetings and we aren't any further along and we're trying to be patient, I mean, we're trying to balance everything, but we still have a lot of things we need to do for the school department. So I would like to know if, what is everybody, how much is everybody willing to wait? Is it just this one more meeting? If we don't come to a resolution or if they don't have their opinion, are we going to move forward or are we going to wait another month? I just think at some point, decisions need to be made and I don't know where we'll be all the same.
As someone who just advocated to play nice in the sandbox, I'll say, I'm about at the end of the sandbox.
Okay.
So I'm not suggesting that we drag this out another six months, I'm suggesting that we were all surprised by Jason's presentation at the, you know, at the town council meeting. We take some time to digest that, we meet with them, try and get their input on, you know, what they think a successful program looks like, but then at the end of the day, it's still a school committee's money, it's still the school's funds. We're not bound by anything that we sit and listen to. So I still think, I believe the original recommendation and I think that comes back to us and we, you know, do what we want with it at that point. I think we just need to make every effort to try and be collaborative and try and, and I think we're about at that juncture where we, this is like, after this meeting, if we can't figure something out, I mean, we've done our best.
Well, I mean, that's where I, I mean, I was pretty much had it.
Oh, I know.
At the last meeting.
Believe me, I've had those moments, you know, yeah.
What was the, what is the status of the capital budget? Did it go to the planning board or none?
It did not.
It did, okay.
Oh, I didn't think it did. I thought they, well, we weren't required to present it, they still saw.
The board's been over there, yeah, they have the documents.
Okay, so are they still going to act on that?
I think we got a new date of March something.
Yeah, March, okay. See, to me, the more about how in the world the balls in the air are going to fall, and I'd like to see what the capital is going to be approved by the planning board and what the, what the other outcomes are and what we, what our appropriation is going to be before we spend anything, because I, if we're going to get some of that in capital, then I don't see the point in not spending our own fund balance on it or this year's surplus on it, but that's my thing. I mean, you guys do whatever you want to do, I'm just saying, until we know where everything's falling.
The only thing, like, is you all know your appropriations of June, it's already determined.
We already know what it is, Steve, it's either flat or a little off, because we only proposed a very slight increase, so we already know what the numbers are.
Well, we threw out some dates and asked the council to weigh in on a joint meeting date in March, so we could revisit this on our agenda. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, the next item, fiscal year '17 operating supplemental capital budget and additional course offerings, do we have anything we need to discuss under that?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recommend that committee vote to approve the revisions to the plan that's submitted. You have, I believe, an update from.
The five-year capital plan?
Am I on the right agenda, man?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there were, there were. Two things that, as a result of, well, it explains it, I don't want to read to you, but basically, there are two things, I'd rather have the most comprehensive plan to date and I really think that Marty did a great job, however, we were a bit surprised at the current situation with the wheelchair lifts and we're looking into that, we're going to track down the, somebody from the state to come in and go over the non-compliance issue, look at alternatives, and we probably will at least put something out to bid so we can get more accurate estimates, because that's pretty hefty, but I want to get it into the plan, because I'm going to reiterate, it has to do with what Mr. Bassett said. The plan needs to be comprehensive, because RIDE wants the most comprehensive capital plan that they can refer to going forward for the next five years, so I feel like this needs to be added.
So you need a motion for us to add this to the five-year capital budget?
So moved, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Additional course offerings, Mr. Lombardi, did you have anything to add to the previous discussion?
Yeah, I just want, all right, so I assume that, Mr. McGee, I assume that in regards to the additional course offerings, you covered that, well, superintendent, I don't know.
You didn't ask us both.
Okay, so I asked what things have been removed over the last five years and the cost to put them back in. Is that, does that reflect the presentation that he gave?
Yes, those three teachers were in place.
Okay, so, all right, and I don't know if anybody's prepared to answer this, I'm just, all right, so I know Mr. Cliff has made a motion on that BIP project proposal to add three stipends in or something to that, could anyone address that now or sometime in the future? So I can understand that, I still don't understand that, I don't know how it fits in, if it fits in.
Right, the problem is access to the class and without changing the schedule, even if I pay the teacher to teach an extra class, I might not have students that are able to fit that in their schedule. That's the, that's the catchphrase. So at the middle school, I think it's a little different scenario, I think it helps them, because I think they need another elective class and I think it would work out for them. For me, I just have a hard time getting it, getting the kids access to the class, even if I had to teach a teaching.
Mr. Hahn? Can you come up and just, I don't, Mr. Cliff, are we talking about the high school or the middle school?
I was talking about both. And I actually, I don't understand why it wouldn't work at the high school either, because, I mean, if you, say, for instance, if you have 70 kids ask for psychology, and you only have two sections, you know, that you have staff available for, but if you have that ability to pull that money and offer that as another alternative, and if there is a teacher available that period, and you can kind of make that work for you too, when you're doing the scheduling, you could avail yourself of that. So, 20 more kids would get the elective they want. I mean, you don't predetermine what the elective's going to be until you do your course selections and offerings, and get the census back from the kids as to what they want, and then you can, I also, I mean, we were able to tweak the schedules.
That's what I kind of tried to, just tried to explain that scheduling issue, like, the problem is that if a kid's taking foreign language to get into a college class, and he has to take foreign language, like, that, it has to be done that way. If they're in the music program, they tend to stay in the music program, so there's just not another slot to give them a class.
But I'm saying, when they do have that opening for an elective, in whatever year it was, at least if you have one more body available to teach one more period, the likelihood is you're going to capture some of those kids who want that.
It's time slots. You're correct, and it wouldn't do that for the high school. The problem that he's, and the problem you're saying is absolutely 100 percent solved it. What Mr. McGee is saying is that the kid who's taking Spanish and chorus, who wants business, can't fit it into his schedule, whether he had a teacher or not.
Right.
So, the eighth period lets that kid access the class. It does, so let's say you're the business teacher, and you say, "I'll teach this sixth class." Tim McGee still can't choose it as a student, because his slots are full.
No, for those kids who have a full slot, obviously, you can't.
Correct.
But not every kid has a full slot, and I'm going to guess that the freshmen probably don't end up with a lot left over to choose from, because I'm assuming you must schedule the seniors first, that they may be required, and it's a work your way down. So, that's, you know, I'm glad to see that you thought it would work in your building and that you.
I think it would work for me, yes.
Yeah, and I think if we, you know, if we tweak it a little bit at the high school, I still think it would work there, because we were able to make it work in ours.
No one wants to look a gift horse in the mouth, but I think Mr. McGee and Mr. Peppen have been around and around with this, and I guess I'm not seeing it work at the high school, but you have a really good report from John, and I guess it, there are some, he kind of spelled it out, so hopefully you read it, and basically, he needs three things for it to line up. So, it's still a shot in the dark, but it's worth a shot.
Let me ask you one more thing. Obviously, the certain dollar number associated with this, do you have a better way of spending it, Mr. McGee, I mean, for additional course offerings or whatever else? Well, think about it, I mean, maybe next meeting we can discuss it, you know, if you have other ideas, other, you know, ways of spending that money, other theories, and stuff, you can think that.
Sure, like I said, accessibility is the issue, like, I mean, if I have four teachers teaching elective courses, I may only have two or three kids that can take that class, you know, and I mean, so I don't know if that's a good, wise decision of spending the money.
Right, I agree. We're on the same page.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, the next item on the agenda is committed rental account update, I have no idea who's going to be on that.
Mr. Tech. Mr. Tech, that's your account, we're going to call it your account.
Yeah, we, we, we do those annually with school committee, now that it's been repaired, so to speak, we typically bring forward recommendations for an expenditure plan, and so you have them in front of you, and you have a detailed memo from, from Mr. Tech. Those are the recommendations.
So, what's this carpet that I see, I know that million-dollar football field that I love.
It's lost weight.
I do, it's a million too, to be exact, but.
For the complex.
Yeah, what's this turf field carpet replacement, $15,000? Is it ripped, is it torn?
No, at some point, you don't, we don't have an exact date, I'll have to check, at some point, we don't have an exact date, it's going to have to be replaced, and the intent is to start to put some money away, so that when that carpet, the carpet is actually the green stuff.
Yeah, I know.
You know, at some point, it's going to be replaced, it's being repaired now, it's being repaired as we can. Rips, our guys can repair it, but the reality is, you got to, we all talk about a plan, you need a plan, because at some point, it's not going to last for us.
Sorry, we bought grass, we're grass, we're going to.
Yeah.
So, that's, you're not spending any money on that, if you're just putting it in the fund, you're just leaving it.
Putting it, putting it aside.
Need a motion?
I think it's a really good, good idea.
And the carpet was at the upper lot?
Yeah, at the athletic.
I would like to make a motion that we, that we approved the recommendations regarding the committed rental account after voting, before I did.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for the record, I'm going to vote against it for the same reason I voted against it last month, it's the upcoming, and I appreciate it, Sherry, that you put that notation in.
All in favor? opposed?
No.
So moved. The next item on the agenda is the art, you have several, regarding the RIDE application, PDIC.
So, I guess I'll start with, where do I start?
I'd like to.
I'll let you, you give the general update, and then I'll, because you're the one doing a lot of the work, I guess, I'm not, I'm not carrying the ball.
That's okay, so.
No, I can admit it freely.
Folks, the fast-track stage two application is, it, on intensive purposes, it's done, it'll be done tomorrow, we're working, a few last-minute working on some things, which I think will be easy for you to do. I plan on putting it together with the appendix tomorrow. It's really important, it has to get in by March 15, so we're in good shape. However, I am going to ask, because I know they want to review it, that we have a special meeting just for that review, so that you can do whatever you need to do, so we can get it in, I'd like to get it in way before March 15. So, we've been working away at it, and it's coming to closure, and I think we can get it to you, and we'd really like to see a special meeting.
Before March 15?
Actually, either next week or the last week in February, please. One agenda item.
Because anything you want revised is just going to take, you know.
We're trying to coordinate that right up with a visit from RIDE, they're going to schedule a visit, and then at least you have a fast-track in, and then you can discuss what you want to do with major, major projects, which there's no, it's not a strict timeline.
Yeah.
Any other updates under this?
So, I'm actually, RIDE does want to come out and visit, they would like the SBC, the school buildings committee, or at least a quorum of that committee to be there. I'm trying to schedule it now, I had an address back from Roseanne, I will reach out to her again tomorrow. So.
Is it okay with you, Sherry pulls the committee just for this one agenda item?
Oh, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll never, you'll never see me gripe about somebody helping me with administrative, because I'm awful at it, I just, you know, I'm not great at it.
I think what you'll have, you'll be able to breeze through those a little ways.
I do have a couple deliverables for you, and I'll get them to you tomorrow. They're going to do it in the afternoon, so they usually schedule it, where they walk through like one to three, and then they meet, and discuss, read it for us.
It'll be quick.
Yeah, it'll be, you'd either have to take an afternoon off, or, you know, or some of it, well, I don't know.
That's you.
Yeah, me, I'll have to take a afternoon. So, so that's the stage two. Stage one, usually, I used to work on.
Stage.
The major, sorry, the major.
The major, I have to go back and look, I think we got, did we get approved to complete stage one of the major? Yeah, I think so.
Yes, we did, yeah, we did, but, but one of the things that we're waiting for, for that, is the NESDAQ study, so.
So, I can read them now?
Yeah, oh yeah, no, you've got time on that, so, so the NESDAQ study, to give everyone an update. Been going back and forth with NESDAQ for about, what, a month and a half anyway, trying to get some more pointed language in the actual deliverable that they provide us. Had a whole lot of success, and then I was presented with, someone presented me with a copy of a recent RFP that they responded to for North Kingstown. And North Kingstown's RFP actually has almost word for word what RFP, our RFP asked for that I have been asking them for. So, the PDIC approved the, approved moving forward and going to the town council with